Welcome to another episode of the Wheels and Beyond Podcast. I'm your host Ben Durm, and today we have Justine Underhill. Who? We'll get into who she is, but first, how did we find each other? Um, also, hi?
Hello.
It was interesting because occasionally I scroll on Reddit and in this case, there's this community called Cars. And I was scrolling one day and saw a snippet of one of your videos that you had posted. And that was great marketing for it because I wanted to know more. Actually, I may put that clip right here or a little bit of it right now.
Not everyone is thrilled about traffic calming designs.
What do you think about the concrete bowls?
They're dumb.
They are very dangerous. People often complain about changes that make driving less convenient. We're used to roads that allow fast, easy driving and anything else feels frustrating. So let's get to the four main objections to these changes. We'll hear the first objection from this Chesterfield, Missouri resident.
It was kind of confusing what they're planning on doing. They look kind of dangerous to me. It's going to do some damage to your vehicle.
Objection number one, they're more dangerous. You may think you're slowing down cars, but you're actually leading to more accidents. Yes, you might see tire tracks on medians or bump outs and assume that more accidents are happening. And maybe that's true, but here's the key difference. A dented fender is not the same as a trip to the hospital. Not all crashes are the same. That's the entire philosophy behind Vision Zero, the road safety movement that's being adopted in cities worldwide. The goal isn't to eliminate all crashes. That's probably impossible. The goal is to make crashes less consequential.
It was really intriguing, so I started scrolling in the comments and people were saying that, hey, this Justine person actually is a counselor. And I was like, oh, that's interesting because I have been considering running here in London, Ontario. Still not entirely sure, still might, might, I kind of want to.
You should do it.
I should. See, I've been encouraged by a lot of people and I've actually, since we chatted the last time, other people were saying, hey, like I live in other wards, I live in your ward, this, that, I'll, I'll knock on doors for you. I'm like, oh, okay. So like I've amassed a small little army.
You already have your base. That's, that's what you need.
Exactly. I'm like, okay, maybe, maybe this should happen. So, okay, back, back to you. So anyways, I commented saying, hey, we should maybe read, like chat because I have a YouTube channel, so do you. And you're like, yeah, sure, DM me. And the rest is history, which is we chatted. And now we wanted to chat again because I think you have some great things to say. So that was like the nice context. But now, who are you in your own words?
Sure. That's a big question. Who am I? Um, I am, I ran for city council in Falls Church. I also have a YouTube channel that I've started partly in relation to some of the stuff that I'm doing on city council. Anytime something comes up and people say something that's, um, you know, maybe not quite true, and then it makes me frustrated. And then I'm like, okay, I'm going to go spend the next three months making a video and then I put it on YouTube and then I share it with the community. But it's a lot of things that are beyond just Falls Church. So it's issues that are happening here, but it's like really things that are well beyond that even in, like the entire world faces, whether it's like speed limits or housing shortages or whatever else. Yeah. Was that a good enough intro? I can also go like, we can go start back in the day when I was like, you know, in college or something like that. But I feel like that sort of is a short version of who I am.
I think that that was a great intro. However, however, that is very tempting. I would love to know about how, or maybe, maybe not, how when growing up, maybe were there some urbanism bits or was this something that started later? Like, was this a, an aha moment when you were younger or was it a very recent thing?
It was a more, more recent thing. It's funny. So my, my, as a child, I wanted to do performance and acting. And so a lot of, and storytelling. So like a lot of the YouTube stuff actually relates to stuff that I wanted to do as a child. And then in, in college, I studied economics and theater and performing arts and mathematics. And so I ended up putting those all into performing economics. That was, I ended up working at Yahoo Finance and actually presenting and telling stories about economics. Urbanism came later. Urbanism, can I give the short story?
Yes, please.
Fun story. Okay. So urbanism happened when I was living in New York City. And like, it's funny because I deeply care about the built environment and like the space around me and like aesthetics and whatever else. But it's funny because like, I never really thought about it that deeply or like recognized like what space I was living in. Until I met this scooter executive and it's so funny because like, this is like, I'm, I have, I don't even know this person's name. If you ask them, like, do they remember this moment? This has no impact for them, but this was like life changing for me. I asked them, um, I was kind of like, you know, poking fun at them. I said, how do you feel about the fact that like people leave your scooters all over the sidewalk? And it makes it really difficult for people to walk around. And it was so funny because he said, yeah, what he said was like, just like mind blowing to me, which was.
Was like, will people leave their cars everywhere or?
Close, close. It was, look, look at the space from building to building in New York City. How much of that space is dedicated to cars? 90%, 10% of the space is dedicated to people. And so why is it that we're so concerned about scooters taking up space from pedestrians? When cars are taking up so much space from people. And like that moment, like I couldn't walk around New York City the same way again. I was like, why are we dedicating all this space to cars? Like, we need, we need scooter lanes. We need more bike lanes. We need more people lanes.
Exactly. Have you ever seen the, whatever, there's, there's this thing where people compare storage of personal property on the road? And it's like, hey, would you put a wardrobe like on your parking spot in New York City, let's say, or anywhere in the world? It's like, no, what, why are you even saying that? Are you like, is there something wrong with you? It's like, okay, add four wheels to it and you're good to go.
Right. It's like, this is literally personal storage that we're giving away for free. Like you have to pay for personal storage at like a storage facility. But like, we have free storage on the street and it's like, really, especially in like some of our major cities, like this is some of the most valuable real estate that we are just like giving away for free. Uh, it drives me nuts. But anyway, yeah. So that was like a big turning point. And then, and then like I started biking a lot more and I started using city bike and then I started getting very aggressive. Like yelling and then, and then it was just all downhill from there.
And a true New Yorker, there we go.
Yeah, right. I know. Well, it was so funny because like, so like I call it kicking taxis. And so it's because I literally kicked a taxi one time. Which is, um, I, this was more like, I wasn't on a bike. I was crossing the street and it was, it was a crosswalk. It was my right to be able to cross. And I guess I was taking too long to cross and the taxi honked at me. This is not my proudest moment, but I just walked up to the taxi. I kicked the, kicked the tire. I was like, what do you want me to do? But I mean, anyways, so that's.
Also, in that case.
Why I call it kicking taxi?
The taxi probably got to a red light faster. I mean, like if you're in New York City.
It's like, where was he going to go faster? Like you're, you're in the middle of a city. Anyway, so it's so funny because like when like, I call it little Justine was like yelling at this taxi driver and kicking, kicking the tire. There was a passenger in the backseat who was just like, absolutely, what is going on? But I do, I call it kicking taxis because it felt good in that moment for me to kick the tire of that car. But like, it was, it did very little good. And so like, you know, did, maybe it might've changed that one taxi driver's behavior? Probably not. And so I've been trying to usher my, my efforts into doing things that are actually going to have an impact rather than, than kicking a taxi.
Technically, it is an impact of your foot on tires.
Yeah. Okay. There was that impact, but not, not a very productive impact.
Exactly. I do get exactly what you're talking about though, because I did something similar in Toronto a few years back, five, something. Anyways, I was just like, maybe 2018 and I was, I was downtown and we were at a crosswalk as well. And no traffic was moving. It was gridlock and yet we're walking and then I think I turned back because something, anyways, I didn't walk straight. And then I walked back just for a second. I think I was checking somebody out and then I came back and this guy honked at me in his SUV. And honks are very loud, but it, it was such a like visceral response from me. I smacked his hood so hard, so fast with a like a face, like a five star, like boom. It didn't leave anything, but it was loud as all heck. And he probably was like, holy shit. Like he just left a dent in my, I didn't, uh, in my hood. He got out. He's like, I'm calling the cops. You can't do that. Um, nothing happened of it. But like, I don't know if you've ever experienced it, maybe it's cycling and other people honk at you or there's a close call. I never liked saying that because it's like, oh, well then why do you bike? It's like, well, because that's not most times. But if you ever get into a shouting match with someone or like an argument, you get like the shakes after because your adrenaline is going so much. And I'm like, exactly what you were thinking. Does this help the, the cause really? Like it might make an impact on them. And it's like, but then they'll just hate everyone. Like, and if I were on a bike and then they hate cyclists more and it doesn't help at all.
Right. I try to be like extra nice when I'm on a bike. Cause like when people who are driving hate cyclists. But here's the thing, like, I don't know, for me, like I drive, I walk, I bike, but like, I do notice like, there's a lot of, uh, at least some, in some places near me. Like there's a lot of hate towards cyclists. Like, oh, like you're just trying to get them to go faster and they're just going to speed through the stop signs and like whatever else. Like, you know, these scuff law cyclists. And so I try to just be extra courteous, extra nice of like, you know, I'm smiling on my bike and being like, look at how wonderful bikers are because I feel like there's this sort of, um, impression that a lot of people have that it's just like, like all those, those awful bikers, like I don't want them on the streets, whatever else. And so I actually try to go out of my way to, to like, undo whatever like pre, preconceived notions that they have. And maybe for good reason, maybe there were some people that were like total jerks on, on their bike at some point, but there are people that are jerks in cars. I don't know. So it's like, everybody's, they're just jerks is, is the way that I see it.
I agree. And I think the reason is, is because whenever someone sees, let's say a cyclist, because there's fewer of them, they're like, oh, they're all like this. Meanwhile, drivers, if you like, most drivers, they're driving straight. They of course roll, roll through stop signs. So everyone gives them a pass. But as soon as a cyclist does that, oh, everyone does that. It's like, yep, so do drivers. Anyways, so little Justine was kicking taxis in New York, et cetera, et cetera. And we both realized that maybe that's not the greatest idea. Sometimes it does make an impact, literally and figuratively. But it's, it's less at a societal or like a, an overall level. And that one person now will go to their friends and be like, oh, I had this one incident. And this, it was horrible. And that means all people on bikes or all pedestrians are just horrible people. Yeah, exactly. So it doesn't really help. So then I'm sure there's more to the progression of this story because you are now you.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, so then I, um, I left, I ended up leaving New York during COVID. I ended up traveling and, and living in a bunch of different cities. So that was kind of interesting to see the sort of city design of like Nashville, Houston, Austin, Miami, Philadelphia. And so like really seeing like, um, I guess it was really easy to get to my exercise classes in Philadelphia. I could just hop on like a little city bike that they have. Whereas when I was in Houston, I had to drive for, uh, I don't know, 20 minutes to get anywhere. And there was nowhere to, the only place to walk was around a golf course. There was no, um, I was living on the outskirts of Houston though. You couldn't even walk through the golf course because you had to be a member. So the only place to walk was around the golf course. So yeah, there was, there was like nowhere to go and you just, you've had to drive everywhere. Uh, so that started getting me thinking about like, you know, like, I like this and I don't like this. And I started, you know, living outside of a, a major city because I'd live in DC and New York my whole life. Started getting me thinking about like, hmm, like maybe I don't enjoy this lifestyle so much. And that's not to say like, there are people who live that way and love it. So like, you know, to each their own, but I realized that it wasn't for me. And then I ended up settling in Falls Church and then I could have like, you know, I, traveling frequently is very, very difficult and very stressful. Cause you know, I wanted to cook and then I was like transporting my cast iron skillet everywhere and like all my cinnamon and spices. And it was just very difficult settling in Falls Church, which is near where my, my family, my family is all in DC. So wanted to live near them. And then I saw a sign on the, the trail that said Bike Falls Church. So I joined Bike Falls Church. And by the way, I knew very few people in the city. I think I only knew my neighbor. I didn't know like pretty much anybody else in the city. I joined this group. They were, there was a, uh, they announced that there's a city was leading a walking tour of the street. And I went on the walking tour of the street for how they were going to redesign it. And people were on the walking tour. Well, the city was saying, or city planners were saying like, we're not going to add a bike lane. We're actually adding more parking spaces. And anyway, it was just like, this is backwards. Like, why are we doing this? And then people on the walking tour were saying, we need more parking spaces. Like, why aren't you adding even more? And I was just like, what is going on? Like, this is like, like everything I know, this is backwards. And then, and then people were saying like, yeah, we absolutely don't want any bike lanes. I, anyway, I was like, what world are we living in? Like, don't people know? And especially like the businesses that were on this sort of main street, like places that are more walkable and bikeable, end up attracting a lot more like, like business money. Like people actually, this is like places that people want to spend time and shop. And actually like they do a lot better. Anyway, so I had all this information on all these stats, but it was so awkward at that time to like, I wanted to go up to these people and be like, well, I wanted to be like, you're wrong. I wanted to kick a taxi. I don't know. But that, that wasn't going to be very productive or like, it felt like uncomfortable to start that conversation there and that in the midst of everything. And I think like temperatures were already kind of heated. So I, I went back. I was like, maybe like, what would I say to these people? And like, how would I say it? And so that started the journey for like, making my first video, which was how would I communicate to somebody who's like, I don't know, on this walking tour, like everything that I wanted to tell them and like actually maybe persuade them or convince them. And so that started my first video, which was basically my love letter to these people on that walking tour. But it was framed in a bigger way. So it wasn't just like Falls Church, like what happens if you like take away parking spaces and make it more walkable and bikeable? It was like the, the entire country or the entire world, like what happens in, in cities when you make places more walkable and bikeable? And what does that do for businesses? And what, yeah, what are, what's the impact like more generally on society? And how we interact with each other and all sorts of other things. So that was like my first foray, foray into this. And then that led me running for city council. Um, and then, and then it just spiraled into where I am now today, making even more videos.
On the video side, so I was just writing down a few things here because you mentioned economics background and I think that that is so important. I can't remember if we chatted about this on our other chat and also the broad audience rather than just, just where you are. And I think there's a careful mix there and what I'm going to try to do for, for me, at least for my content, I just, it might come out today. I might be able to do a last minute edit or something. But anyways, there's some stuff happening in another neighborhood where a crossing guard was run into. Stationary crossing guard, not even on the road, just sitting in her chair. She is, I believe, okay. But obviously a vehicle was driven into her. So that's, that's crazy. And so, and it numerous incidents. So I want to cover that topic because there's, and like give some airtime to something that normally would go into obscurity. Because it's a local incident, blah, blah, blah. It's like, okay, but this happens a lot. And then the economic side. I think that you'll do well if you go into that because people care about their pocketbooks pretty much. Like it's like, oh, safety. It's like, wait, what? That like, what, what is money if you don't have your health and you get run into? Uh, but I don't think a lot of people think of that. So anyways, I think that you'll do just fine in the coming year, doing that.
And what I love to do is like take really complex topics and like make them approachable and explainable. And so like, um, or understandable. That's why I love doing like the finance and economic stuff, but actually like in urban design, there's a ton of like unintuitive, non-intuitive things. Um, and so I sort of love like, you know, unveiling like, you think that adding a lane on a highway would make it more like traffic flow more easily. But actually it's the opposite. And so I love sort of talking about those things. But to your point about economics, like economics is like wrapped up in all of this urban design stuff. Whether it's, um, how you fund your city. I mean, specifically for Falls Church, the reason that we were able to develop, uh, build a brand new high school building, which we had needed to do for the past 30, 40 years, uh, was because we were able to allow for development right next to a metro station. This is just absurd that there was, there was nothing next to this metro station. Now there's going to be a wonderful community with apartments and shops, um, and, and offices and medical spaces and all sorts of things. Right near the metro. And because of that project, we were then able to fund our high school. So in my view, that was like win, 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 win. Like that's just such a wonderful thing to have happen. But there were real like city finances there that were tied up in that project. And so like, how allowing for more people to live centrally near jobs or whatever else can also be what funds your city for the long run. Or I don't, it's funny because like, um, there's this really, I don't know if you've heard of, uh, Urban Three. But that's a video that I'm, I'm going to be working on with them. And I got to interview Joe Manicazi, who's with Urban Three. Talking, they have these wonderful chart, charts that show like where cities are net revenue positive and where their net revenue negative. And so people have this idea like, oh, I'm living in a single family home and I'm, you know, providing so much for my city. And those people in those pesky apartments are taking so much, you know, and they're, they're costing me money. But actually it turns out that oftentimes, single family homes are the ones that are draining city coffers. Because if you think about it, like every extra mile of pipe, every extra mile of road has to like, you, you have to service that, maintain it, whatever else. For very, a very low population as you extend outwards in, in single family housing areas. Whereas very little roads needs to be maintained for that, that, um, that little bit of apartment building that, that the apartment building takes up. So trying to explain things like that has also been fun. I've yet to make that video. So TBD on how well I do. But I think these are things that are like really important for people to understand in like how their city functions.
And I think that's going to go really well because Urban Three, um, that's, I think a lot of charts have been used, especially not just bikes from Urban Three. Interestingly, it's a US-based company because I reached out, uh, within the last month to our city saying, hey, not to Urban Three, but I said to our city, hey, have you thought about like going through with a survey from Urban Three? And they said they have another partner that they're working with, they're Canadian, et cetera. And we looked into the comparison. I have not done any video or anything on this, but the one that services our city and they work with are more about the data, but not data visualization. I really think that Urban Three does a great job with the data urban, uh, urbanization, the urban data visualization. There we go. That.
Urban visualization.
There we go. Those words that order. And so it's really good. And it's like, oh, it's, it's very good. I don't know if anyone's seen that, but they, they're very.
It makes a difference in terms of like how people relate to it. I think once you see the chart, it's like, that sticks in your mind a lot better. You know, I can say like, well, this is costing the city money and this is making the city money. But like actually seeing the, the vast difference of like what things cost and, and are netting the city is like, I don't know, that, that for me, we're, I mean, that's why I work in, in video too. I think the visualization of a lot of these things makes such a big difference.
I would love to see our neighborhood because there is actually a fair amount of mixed, okay, not mixed use, but mixed density. So there's single family homes, there are apartments, there are townhouses and, uh, we showed up to council last year, the year before to say, like to be Yimby's and say yes to council saying, hey, there's 23 units going in. There were some Nimbys there. And then it got passed that it was going to go through. Yay. And the council thanked us saying, hey, thanks for showing up and, uh, being one of the only two that showed up and said yes to this because we do need to, like, it was a weird spot of land that really there was no other use for it except for just being vacant for anyways. Then another, other, um, very weird piece of parcel of land that was like landlocked and stuff. Anyways, um, so those are moving forward. Yay. But I would love to see those, I would call them spires of color. Where like either negative draw on the city or a positive like revenue stream for the city to maintain, et cetera. Anyway. I, yeah, I would love to see that here. I wanted to actually cover one more thing, which was, and this was something that I had not heard of until you mentioned it. Just in an offhand comment the other time. Did you mention something about Falls Church being the top two in education? Or something in the United States?
I think it's like the second most educated population in the US. And so my favorite trivia is like, then what is number one? Do you know what number one is? Did I ask you that?
I think you probably even told me and I forget now, but yeah, it just stuck out.
Oh yeah. My favorite trivia question. Number one is, I mean, for anybody listening, it was featured in a movie a few summers ago, which is Los Alamos. And so, I mean, it makes sense because Los Alamos is, uh, the place where like they literally transported a whole bunch of scientists, uh, to set up the, the Manhattan project and all that stuff. Anyway, so Los Alamos is number one, and then Falls Church is number two. I think we also recently won award for healthiest city. I don't know. That, that's like more of a fluffy standpoint, but I think it was, um, yeah. Metric. Yeah. Right. It's how, how do you determine like who's the healthiest? But so Falls Church is number one and healthiest for whatever, whatever that means. And then number two in education.
I'm totally just on a map on my other screen and looking up the, uh, Los Alamos. It's funny because it kind of looks very suburb-y.
Hmm.
But.
I mean, it is, that is an example of like a government constructed town, like that didn't really exist.
It totally looks like it too. Like that, that's also why I'm like, oh, huh. This is, when you mentioned the Manhattan project stuff, I'm like, yeah, this totally looks like something that was made around that era. That is like, okay, scientists, do your thing. Activate science mode. Okay. So then we're still kind of going on the timeline of Justine here from tire kicking Justine to, uh, moving around the US. Oh, I was going to ask this earlier. What vehicles were you driving during this? Like, let's say Houston era?
Oh, interesting. So yeah, like, well, what's interesting is so when I was, I went from New York and then I went to Philadelphia. So then I was, um, we went by train. And so it was, I was just using my bike, a bike, a city bike to get around. Then went to, um, Miami, didn't have a car in Miami. So I was walking everywhere. But like, I was, it's so funny. I probably picked like the worst places because it was like, the place that it wasn't like in downtown Miami where you could walk. This was like, I don't know, out somewhere where like the nearest grocery store was a Walmart and you had to cross like, you know, like a highway and like the bridge was miserable and like the walk was miserable, everything. I like, I swear, I was the only person like walking on these, these roads. And then when I got to Austin, I did rent a car. And so it's funny because like then, then I was like, okay, now I'm like living the suburban lifestyle. What, what is interesting is when I was in Austin was when they had the, there was like a snowstorm and then like a power outages. And like, this was like, there was like a whole like massive, like horrible, like things that went on across the city. I mean, and there was like a huge, huge deal. I couldn't leave the house for over a week. And so like the, the, the house was on a steep hill. Anyway, it, that, this is like, this gets to like walkable cities. I was in East Austin. Um, there is no place to walk to. I was talking to my dad on the phone and I was like, I told my dad, I was like, we have no electricity and we're like, we're about to run out of food. And there's also like no food at any of like, I, I can, I could see on my phone, there was like no food at like grocery stores or like, you know, all the news reports were saying that, you know, people are raiding grocery stores. And so my dad was like, could you just like walk? Could you just walk somewhere? I was like, where am I going to walk to? There's nowhere to walk to. But that's not all of Austin. A lot of Austin is like, or there are parts of Austin that are walkable. I happened to be in a place that like was absolutely not. And so that was like, very, um, I will say it's funny. I have, I have a little bit of trauma from that period of time. And the trauma that I've carried with like along is, is specifically, I'm afraid of running out of food. And so I always have like canned, like tuna now, um, like just somewhere stashed away just in case. But it almost like, that experience almost turned me into like a little bit of a prepper where I was just like, you know, I like, can I survive for like three months if like I had no food? Like, how would I do that? So I bought like little solar panels and all, all these other things.
I mean, that's not necessarily the worst thing. I mean, like having like, okay, three months might be a lot, a lot. But I mean, like being able to sustain yourself for like a month off of a few canned things that you have somewhere and some, I'm just trying to think, if you don't have power in this, I guess canned is the best way. Cause I was going to say, oh yeah, just a bunch of like canned or, uh, bagged dry beans and lentils. I'm like, no, wait, you would need to cook those, which you could, but that's a.
Oh, yeah. You would like set up a fire. Well, I, so I mean, I do, I have all this like freeze, this is where I'm a little, I've gone, well, it's good to be prepared. I have like freeze dried items, you know, like, you know, just out of water. I mean, I'm sure it's not the tasty stuff, but I have it as like, yeah. 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 I like freeze dried ice cream. Actually, that's funny is that.
I'm learning new things.
I can't keep, oh my gosh. That is like, you go to like the, like air and space museum or any of the astronaut places, they have, I don't know, any astronaut museum. They always have like freeze dried ice creams. Um, and I love those. I can't keep those in the house because I will eat those. And then not have them for like whatever I was prepping for.
Like future Justine, I'm sorry. It's so good.
I know, right? Yeah. I have to be careful with what, like what foods I'm, I'm prepping with. Um, but yeah, so anyway, so.
Too, too good. So it's like, uh, I don't really want it only in case of.
That's where like the, the freeze dry like chicken that I have, I'm not going to be opening that for like any other reason than it's an emergency. I do not want to eat that. I think there's also like freeze dried pilaf and other things like that. Like I, it does not look appetizing unless I'm like really hungry.
That's, that's a good little thing though. I, okay. For the prepping side of things. Oh, actually I can get into a different topic that is actually urbanism related about walkability and bicycles being the best mode of transportation in a post-apocalyptic times. I mean, gas goes bad, right? So I've said this in a previous video or whatever, but yeah, thoughts on that.
I keep, it's funny. I will say, I keep wondering like in all these apocalyptic movies that I'm watching, like why there aren't more bikes? Like everybody's walking everywhere, but also like, I could understand like maybe at a certain time, like gears break down. I don't know. You'd have to like, be like, make sure that you're able to like, maintain the bike. But I do think that that's legit. There should be more bikes. But I do think that that's legit. There should be more bikes in like post-apocalyptic world.
So I did since that last episode, which I'm gonna call it, if people are looking for it, I think it's the Haley one and of the, of the podcast. And since then I've looked it up. I'm like, why aren't more bikes used? And so of course, like machoism and like the Mad Max style things where it's like, yeah, big cars and gasoline. And there's actually an economy where it's like, hey, like the dominant, like in Mad Max, um, they're like, hey, we have this big oil refinery. And like, that's the heart of the world. And whoever doesn't have access to this, doesn't have like sustenance and like other things. So there's that. So trickle all the way to the top, et cetera. But then other people were like, well, actually yes to that. But it's really difficult and I'd never heard or read this before. And I was like, oh, and you might appreciate this from a filmmaking side of things. It is very difficult to film bicycles because when you're walking, walking scenes, it's, you can have someone on a steady cam walking backwards and someone spotting blah, blah, blah. You have this and they're walking around a park and they're talking and there's exchange of dialogue. They do that a few times for different camera angles, blah, blah, blah. Very easy. Okay. And the actors get to walk or let's say wheel in a wheelchair for accessibility, et cetera, depending. They're all about similar speeds. In a car, you can rig up the car like quite well. There's no bouncing. There's shocks built into the cars. They're going on even high speed. There's that. Meanwhile, bicycles harder to rig up. Like where do you put the rig? They can't sustain. They're, they're very light machines. So there's going to be bumps and blah, blah, blah. You could do, I've seen some really crazy rigs recently that have gimbals and everything and, uh, like backward facing gimbals. And even me, I, on the back of the cargo bike that I mentioned, facing backwards while Natalia's riding forwards and I can operate and it's pretty cool. But those are, those were like lighter cameras for sure, rather than the big cinema rigs. It was a very interesting thing to read.
That's really interesting. It's funny because, um, I recently saw how they, uh, set up shots for like people riding horses. So like writing, like filming people riding a horse might actually be similar to people filming people riding a bicycle. And it's hilarious how, um, they said, they basically have the person on a car. On, on like what it looks like part of a horse. So it's all like, you know, and then it's like moving up and down. Anyway, so like, yeah, it was, it's almost like, I imagine like to film somebody riding on a bicycle, you might actually have to put like part of a bike, attach it to a car or something like that.
I guess the other thing is depending on where you are, the scene, like so a post-apocalyptic thing, usually there's a bunch of set. Like you have to have a highway full of cars, a lot of CGI used, et cetera. But as you're like pedaling, actually I think your thing might be better because then you could green screen it. Oh, then there's so many other problems with that, with it looking fake. But like you're traveling so like inconveniently fast for the film crew that you're passing things so fast that it's the weird in between of, should we CGI it? Like they do in highways, like where the car weaves between all these cars, which are totally just put in after the fact. Or do we keep it a real set?
I, I, I could imagine like, yeah. So like dialogue is tricky, but like, I could even imagine like a beautiful aerial shot where like, there's this like highway filled with cars or whatever else that are all broken down. And then somebody's like biking in between and like, I don't know, you're like zooming out and like showing the bigger picture. Uh, there's, there's ways to do it where you don't have to like have the camera attached. So I still like, want to challenge people. If you're making an apocalyptic movie, try to get a bike in there.
I think that would be amazing. I think that's literally, I don't think that's been done. I think you could actually make an entire film, this like novel where it's like brand new and they focus on how bicycles quite literally haven't been an option. And even someone in the, in the movie would be like, yeah, you know, all those other ones? Like, why do they always use cars? Like, where are we getting gas? The, the gas stations are empty. Like what?
That's so funny. Oh, well, so to continue, I, I guess where I was in Austin, I mean, all my prepper. No, that's good though. I, I appreciate, uh, I'm trying to think, I mean, to, to lead me to like where I am now on, uh, city council. Yeah. Like some of, some of my traveling and whatever else like really did inform like how I think about, um, city design. But it really was, actually, I'll, so I'll say two things. So it was really spurred by like the key milestones spurred by like that conversation I had with the Sut Guter executive. Getting frustrated on that walking tour. And then, um, I would say that third thing was finding books. So like I got frustrated. I started making videos and then like for the evolution of me, like reading Jeff Speck's, A Walkable City. Reading, uh, Charles, um, Montgomery's Happy City. There are certainly books that then like, you know, I, I think of it as like a little snowball where like, it just like started growing and growing, growing and rolling downhill. I was just like sort of reading so much and then realizing just like how backwards so much of, of what we're doing is. And so like, I don't know, there's probably like five super influential books that like, just like completely shaped how I see things now. And now like, once you see things a certain way, you can't, can't go back. And so now like, then I'm like, I have to tell people about this. And so that's been really nice to be able to share like some of the knowledge that I've been getting from, from books and other things like that with like a broader audience.
Okay. So now I, I have a question that I'll write down and, uh, you guys get to wait until the end to hear it. But the next step, how did that council? Like inkling pop into your brain. It's like, oh, I could run. Cause if you go onto your YouTube channel, you have a video that is the, I think the first one on there. I don't think the one that you mentioned from earlier, but it's, it's the council one. I'm running. Yay. And yeah, how did that happen? Like the months leading up to that video and then after that video, how did that all happen?
It's funny. Technically my first video is like, hey, I'm running for city council. But I will say the video that comes after that, which is called who owns the streets, right now, I might change the title. That one I'd been working on for a year. So I was like in the process of, of working on that video like for so long. And like, you know, when you're editing things yourself and you're doing things for yourself for the first time, it just takes so long. So anyway, that was like long in the process. Uh, what had happened was after I went on that walking tour, um, and I started making that video, I started to get to know people in Falls Church. I applied to be on the housing commission. Um, and so then, and then I got accepted. And so I was on the serving on this like city board. And through that I then got to meet the vice mayor and I got to meet all sorts of other people in the city. Um, and there was this group that was just forming called Falls Church Forward, which was to advocate for housing and biking and walking and community businesses and welcoming spaces and, and other things like that. And so I ended up giving, I turned my who owns the streets video into a presentation. So it was like, I was almost like a little, I, I was so passionate about getting people like, especially all the people who went on that walking tour to like see things in a different way that I just made like some PowerPoint slides and I was like, you know, one man band, like going around giving presentations. So I gave this presentation to Falls Church Forward and it's, it's funny because it's like, I don't know, like what ended up happening, but I ended up like becoming one of the organizers for that group. So it's like, it was like a group that was just starting out now, we're like 500 members. But like at that time, it was like very, very small. And so then just like, I, I don't know. It's like, uh, I keep using the snowball analogy, but it's just like, I kept meeting more people and it kept like, my community kept growing. So I went from knowing one person in Falls Church to knowing so many more people on Falls Church. And then like after giving that presentation, it's funny, I wasn't even thinking about running for council or like, I don't know. I was like, it would be cool, but like, I like, I'm not like prepared or I'm not like, I don't, I don't, I'm not like the right person or I don't know enough people or I wouldn't be able to do it. So it just, other people came to me and said like, hey, would you consider running for council? And sometimes that's all it takes is like somebody else being like, hey, I think like, especially like in leadership positions, like saying, hey, like, would you consider running for council? Like we would support you. Um, like let us know how we can help. Like that sort of, I guess, ignited like, oh, maybe I could do this. And like, and now I have other people who are encouraging me and whatever else. And so yeah, I, I'm now like, I don't think I would have run had somebody not asked me, which is like a little, I, I don't know. Like, I think that's a little bit sad. So I also want to encourage people, anyone listening to this, like you don't have to wait for somebody to ask you, like you can just do it. But also other thing that I want to encourage people is like, you should start asking other people to run. I mean, if it's not, if you're not the one to run, you should start like, like trying to get other people to do it. And so, yeah, I, I, I would like to say like, oh, I just felt so inspired and I like, I, I ran, I decided to run. It's like, no, I really, really took outside force to like, get me to get up the courage to do that. And then knowing that I had that support. Um, I was then able to like launch the campaign.
And I do have to say though, you did put in the work. That ask would, from someone else saying, hey, you should run, would not have happened if you didn't do what you did, which was a lot of effort on your part. So just to give you a little bit of props there.
Yeah. Like it was almost like, I needed like, you know, it's like starting an engine or whatever else. You got the spark and then I was like able to like, I had the, the, the momentum to, to keep going. So yeah, that's not to minimize. There was a ton of work. I, it's funny, if I had to pick any point in my life that I was like the most stressed out, probably there are two points in my life. One would probably be like during finals. Like, I don't know. There's like one time where I had finals in college that I was just like, I'm going to die. Other, other time was like during the campaign, just because it's just, it always felt like you could be doing more. Like I was never doing enough. Like anytime you're running a campaign, like you could be out there door knocking. You could be out there doing whatever else. And like, you know, I could be putting more ads out there or like, there's a million things you could be doing and there's just never enough time.
Speaking of with the, like the ads and the door knocking, I'm going back to my notes here, campaign strategies and community building. So you covered the community building. I guess we'll chronologically go through the next bit. So how did the actual election go? Cause I wanted to touch on the one thing I mentioned earlier about the streets, um, and how you went door knocking on that one advocacy thing, but we're not there yet in chronologically. So that's for right after this, which is how did that election go? What was the like voter turnout, et cetera?
Falls Church has a pretty high voter turnout, but this, it's funny because like for, for local elections, it's a, this is like an off-off year election that I was in. So off-year is like not a presidential election. Off-off year is like not a presidential or governor's election. So this is like, the only thing people were really voting for was like city council. And so getting turnout is like, that, that's also part of what you try to do as a candidate is like encourage even more turnout. So yeah, like there are, Falls Church is small, like Falls Church, uh, Falls Church is, uh, just to give people context, is, is nestled between Arlington, Virginia and Fairfax. Fairfax has 1.5 million people. Arlington has like point five million people. I mean, give or take it, this is rough. And then Falls Church is 15,000. So we are like this little, like tiny little, we're, we're literally called the little city, or that's our sort of branding of the little city. So it is absolutely possible to get to every single door in Falls Church. So that was my goal was to knock on every single door. I got to most doors. I did not get to all doors. And then I also wanted to get to apartment buildings and other things like that. And so that was my main goal. I got like 90% of the way there, but that's, that was always the, the touch, which was like, oh my gosh, I just need to get to a few more doors or, oh my gosh, what if I put out another video? Maybe that'll make a difference or maybe, oh my gosh, what if I like got some more Facebook ads or whatever else? So yeah, the election went well. I mean, obviously like yay, I got elected, but it was interesting because like running on the platform that I was running, which was a pro housing, pro, um, people for spaces approach. Was interesting during the time that I was running because, uh, there was so much construction going on. Um, and so like Falls Church, um, if you look at the map of DC and like where a lot of like new housing is going, Falls Church is like, in terms of like percentage wise, has outpaced, although the entire rest of the region, I believe. And so we've been adding a lot of new buildings and other things like that at a pretty fast pace. And so there's a lot of like consternation as to like, how, how is this changing our city? How is this going to change our lifestyle, whatever else? And so it was a particularly tough election cycle, I would say, because if I were running right now, all of that construction is now open. People get to enjoy the hall foods. People get to enjoy all the new restaurants and shops. Before that, it's like, they're just like, oh, this is awful. This is making my life worse. And so that's where I found myself having a ton of conversations about housing, about walkability and bikeability and other things like that. And like, I actually used those conversations to be able to like better inform the, the videos that I'm making now, uh, which is like pretty much all the concerns that people had. Uh, like most of them fit into like, I don't know, maybe like 10 different buckets. And so I learned how to like, A, listen and like hear what their concerns were. And then, um, on an emotional level, talk about like, you know, benefits or like, well, you know, uh, earlier, not, not framing things, everything in the negative. Cause I think a lot of people see change and automatically jump to negative. And so the challenge that I had was very much, um, here are some of the benefits and like, here's a different way to look at this. And like, maybe this could also be good. And then, so then my challenge was to, to win on that. And, and I was, I, I made it. I mean, you know, sometimes I think like, oh my gosh, I can't believe this happened. But clearly what I did resonated with people.
Yeah. And I'm curious to see what the next election, depending on if you run again, but, um,
I get booted out.
I'm just looking at the map right now and is a lot of the extra housing infill or, because it's almost like you have an island state or island city going on because of the boundaries. I'm like, hold up, that actually can be a good thing. That's why I was kind of quiet over here. I'm, I'm analyzing the map and I'm like, wait a second, it is small. And there's a, I, there's even like boundary, what is it? Boundary cafes or something or cornerstones?
Oh yeah. There's cornerstone. Oh, that's funny. So the, the, the boundary stones are from what DC's boundaries used to be. So the boundary stone is like, like the old historic boundary of DC. So DC used to actually come all the way out to Falls Church. But then, don't even quote me on the history. Something happened. I knew what it was at one point and all that land, uh, got ceded to Virginia. Um, and so now it is not, not part of DC anymore. But anyway, so it's kind of a fun, like little marker to, to go and see as like where the original stones were. So yeah, you know, it's funny because it's like what I call the development that we've, or the new housing infill. Yeah. Like technically this is a city. So like, everything is like infill. There's no like greenfield developments or like anything that's like, you know, out, out in this, there's no boonies to Falls Church. It's just like everything that we have is what we have. So like the, one of the new buildings that we had like replaced a, a gas station. And so it was like a gas station and a seven 11. And now it's a, you know, has like hundreds of housing units. Another one across the street was what, what I like to call, oh, we called it rugs and drugs. So it was a Rite Aid, uh, like an old Rite Aid and a carpet store. And so that was replaced with like, um, now we're going to get like a bakery and lots of housing and coworking spaces and whatever else. So you could call it infill of, of sorts.
Or repurposing of land, I guess.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah. Um, and so, uh, what we did recently pass was an accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So that to me is like really true, like infill. Um, where there's going to be like more housing on existing lots. Um, so that, that is like, we passed that a few months ago. So that is like, we'll, we'll see how that, how that turns out.
For sure.
But yeah, it's been exciting to like grow this community a little bit.
Yeah. From our perspective, we have the ADUs or auxiliary, yeah, uh, ADUs. It is ADUs, ARUs.
Yeah. I call them accessory dwelling units, but different places call them different things.
Either way, they're all kind of similar, um, whether the, the auxiliary dwelling units or residential units is the ARUs, et cetera. I think that's what, I've been calling them ADUs, but they are ARUs here in London and those got passed in the last few years. It's interesting because within those few years, like they're, they're fairly expensive to build. There's obviously incentive from the city, in our case at least. But it's not that, that much. There's like the interest free loans, et cetera. And so from the cities, the, the, from the horse's mouth, so to speak, it's been like 200 or 300 units, which is good. It's more than zero. But it's, the uptick has not been as high. I know one of our friends is actually looking into converting their, uh, garage into that. And so they hired an architect and everything and they're going to go forward with that, uh, in the next few months. So, I mean, that'll be adding on. Like it just, it allows for it to happen. So I think that that can't be a bad thing.
Yeah. That's where it, it's funny because if you look at a lot of the research, like when people, places have allowed ADUs, ARUs, whatever else, there hasn't been as like big of an uptick as like there could be. And so it's like, why, why is that not happening? I do think that financing is a big part of it. Um, even in, in Seattle. So Seattle and Washington state, um, has allowed for like more, um, a lot more housing on each, each lot. And there hasn't been like a huge uptick. And I was talking to somebody who does like a lot of like housing development. There's like, basically there's like a financialization chain for like large multi-unit, like mixed use developments, like what we call five over ones. And so it's like, this is like a standardized product and it's really simple. And then the bank can be like, here's some money for it. And like, it's really like standardized. There's no like, you know, uh, no huge like questions about it. Whereas for like a lot of this infill development, there isn't like, it's not standard. And so it's just like, oh, this like Joe Schmo is going to put something in their backyard. Like the, the financing, uh, part of that is like really, really difficult. And so there isn't like, um, or even if somebody wanted to tear something down and like build like, you know, six units rather than one unit, there isn't the, the money or the capital, um, to finance that in the same way that there are for like large, large apartment complexes. And so that's something that I've been talking to developers and other place, people and home builders. And so that's almost a burgeoning thing that's coming out now, but it, it hadn't existed before.
Strong towns had a video on that. I forget where with the strong town or what, what the, the town was. I know, I think it might be three years old, maybe more even at this point. Either way, they were covering that very specifically saying, hey, the like building from the ground up and smaller incremental development. And they were covering exactly what you were saying, which was sometimes the loans don't exist for that type of thing. They're like, oh, I'd like to build this. It's like, uh, what? No, we don't have a, I, you're at the till and they're like going through their checkbox or the dropdown menu. They're like, yeah, that doesn't exist. It's like, yeah. Uh, so how do I do this? It's like, uh, I don't know. I guess go to a different bank. So you do that and the same thing happens over and over and you eventually get nowhere.
And so actually I, I ended up speaking to somebody who, who's like trying to like organize, like, or pull together money to fund some of these, because it, it's like, we need more housing, like in a lot of cities. And so like, there's, there's room for this. it, it's like, we need more housing, like in a lot of cities. And so like, there's, there's room for this, but it just like, it's just a product that doesn't really exist. And so hopefully soon we're gonna start seeing those like come together.
Exactly. Yeah. There is a market for it. I think it's growing, especially now that, and there is lag when policy gets introduced. So I, I get it. Like something pops up like ADUs and then it's like, okay, well, we're not used to this, so it's gonna take a few years. So I'm glad that it's unbanned pretty much. It's like, oh, you're now allowed to do it. So then things will pop up around that. So that's at least good. So now you got elected, et cetera, et cetera. And now we can get on to what I found very interesting. It obviously stuck in my head because I brought it up a few times now, but the knocking on doors after there was pushback for upgrading the street. And I know you joked about it. You're like, oh, I, I may not do this later, uh, because now you have a lot more things to deal with. But at the beginning of your term, I don't know if that still stands, but I mean, you get very busy as a counselor, so I totally understand it.
So basically what happened, um, was the during, well, so I, I did this actually for several different projects. So there was a project for, um, uh, to re, repave an entire street, but also just like completely redesign it and add, I guess, better like water, like retention features and, and add like more better sidewalks and all these other things. And so, but that would also take away parking spaces. And so what I ended up doing was, you know, like full of energy just seen, this was after it was elected. Um, you know, I was kind of in the mode of like going door to door from, from the campaign. So I was like, why not just keep going? Although it is exhausting. Um, I ended up going to every door on the street to like talk to people about the changes that were coming and like, listen to them about any concerns that they had. It is unprecedented in our, like at least in Falls Church or, but like in this area, it's like remove parking for the street parking for some of these like traffic calming features or whatever else. And so that I knew that was gonna be like, some, there's gonna be consternation about that. And so actually going and talking to everybody on the street or leaving a little note saying like, hey, like I stopped by. I think, and, and saying, hey, I'm a neighbor. Um, and leaving that note made a difference. And then the other one that I, I, I've been doing this for like so many projects, but I, I, a lot more like when I first started, there was a, a new housing, a senior living project. That was, um, we were voting on. And so somebody had come to city council to say like, how dare you, um, vote this project forward? Um, because the people that live nearby, this new senior living project is gonna cast a shadow on, on where they live and like, where's the equity? Like they're not here to speak up for them. So like for themselves. So I'm here to speak up for them. So there's somebody that didn't even live in the area that was gonna get shadows or whatever else. Uh, so I just went to all the doors of like the people who lived next door to like where the senior project was gonna go. Um, I showed them the plans. I talked to them, like sat down and had coffee with some of them, like uh, just like had conversations. Nobody cared. Like, uh, nobody cared about the shadows. So like the, what they, what they were asking for though, was they wanted better walkability. They wanted to be able to cross the street more easily. The senior project was gonna have a park associated with it. And so they wanted to be able to access the park easily. They wanted to have like traffic calming because people were like blowing like down the street at like 50 miles an hour. And so those were things that I then was able to advocate for on city council, asking for like, hey, can we get raised crosswalks? Hey, can we get like pinch points? Hey, can we get um, a new crosswalk here? It turned out like, uh, from listening to these people talk, like, uh, somebody who lived in that community ended up getting hit by a car. And so, uh, when they were, when they were crossing the street. So like, these were all things that were like super useful and that I could then advocate for as we, like, as the road was gonna get redone as part of this, this project. But it's just so funny because like somebody else's preference for shadows turned out to not be like what a lot of these people even cared about, which was like, they were excited that they were gonna get like an improved a park right across the street. Like, uh, there, there's all sorts of things where they were able to see benefits. And then like what they actually wanted was like not in line with like what other people thought that they probably wanted.
Yeah. And construction projects, municipal projects, anyways, these sort of things, it's not always gonna be positive, positive, positive. You may get those shadows. However, do the pros outweigh the cons? And in this case, definitely. And you talked to real people and not the people literally living in the shadow. You know, the saying like living in someone's shadow. It's like, no, 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 there's gonna be a development. Yeah. No. So like, I think that that matters so much. Talking to the people who like are going to be directly affected right next to it.
And it's funny because like, yeah, and these people weren't people that were showing up to, it was so funny because one person was like, you're on city council. Like this is the first time I've ever talked to somebody from city council. Like I, you know, I feel like so like, they were, they were just like so happy. I had that connection. I was like, hey, like here's my email. Feel free to reach out at any point. You know, and like other things came up, like they wanted to make sure that like during construction, that they had a point of contact and that there's, you know, so there's like real, real issues or concerns, but like that was something that I was able to negotiate for, like make sure we were able to do.
Just hearing that I think would benefit a lot of people and like really encourage them to like say, oh, oh, I have a direct line. Like if something happens, I can.
Yeah. It's like, like I'm, I, that's where I was trying to tell them like I'm a resource. I mean, but the other thing is like, I, I don't try to sugarcoat everything. Like I think there's a lot of benefits to being able to like, I mean, for the senior living project, like there's all sorts of one, we're getting this park. We're getting like, um, millions of dollars for affordable housing. We're getting like, there's so many things we're getting from this project. But like also, yeah, there, there are downsides. And so like, you know, and these people are gonna have to live next to construction and I, you know, that you can go down the list. So it's not to like sugarcoat that like, oh, this is like all kumbaya wonderful stuff. There's downsides, but it's like what, at least from my perspective and as a city counselor, like, like what are the benefits versus what are the costs? And that's what I'm like, I tried to weigh with all the, the decisions that we make.
Exactly. No, it, I'm glad you recognize it because it's the truth where it's like, yeah, there's, there's downsides to it as well. But can you, uh, deal with those downsides and will the future be better after? The answer in this case, yes. So yay, door knocking.
Yay.
One thing you were bringing up about the paving and parking spots and, uh, I don't think the word was used, but the water permeability. I think is especially with more volatile, uh, more volatile weather in the coming years, et cetera, even now. I mean, we, we've got some very wacky weather going on this year for us here in London. And some of the places that have massive parking lots start flooding, put simply, because of water permeability. So, uh, we don't even need to go into massive detail here, but like, you can look it up, uh, not, not even you, but anyone listening. It's a very important thing. And yeah, like a, a lot of our neighbors are putting like widened driveways in to account for more cars. And we are looking to actually reduce our driveway, uh, in its, like how much it takes up. Cause we, we have the one car and people have, we've mentioned it a few times and a lot of people are like, hey, your resale value is gonna plummet. It's like, okay, well, one, probably not moving. Two, if we do, we can always just expand it or three, take the hit. I don't know. Like that, that's, if it's over 10 years from now, then we can just do another one. I don't know.
Right. That's so funny.
Okay. So I did have that question from earlier that I mentioned I was gonna, and I would have forgotten if I did not type it down. So I wanna see the other side of things where we're saying, hey, urbanism is good, but from your perspective, what's your counterpoint to when I say like, why not just bulldoze our cities? And that's what everyone wants, right? They want more parking spots and urbanism has gone too far and the bike lanes, no one's using them and no one's walking. Get rid of the sidewalks, burn the trees. I'm obviously making a horrible case for that, but like, why not pave all of Falls Church in parking?
Sorry. That's like, that's just so awful. Yeah. If you think about like the extremes, uh, man, well, if somebody's, well, if somebody said that to me, it's funny because like I do generally, generally try to think about who my audience is. And like, my audience usually, like when I'm trying to communicate to people, is usually not people who are like that, like far gone. Like I try to get people who are maybe like me, where like I wasn't really thinking about the stuff that deeply. And now I like, can see like the consequences of like what the actions are. Somebody that's that far gone who's advocating for that. It's like, uh, but what I probably would say, what sort of world do you wanna live in? Like, do you want one, A, that's like completely paved? That, um, like from a financial standpoint is probably not sustainable for the city. Like that would like make it so that we have like fewer like people coming to visit Falls Church. That would make it so that like our restaurants are not as successful. That would make it so that people can't walk places. And by the way, like adding more parking spaces actually leads to more, more traffic congestion. Um, and so it's like, uh, what I would probably talk to them about is like, what, like, what do you want in your life? Like what, what sort of like world do you want to live in? And like, I would might even ask what places do you visit on vacation? And like that, that might be a great, great way to like, and then what do you, what do you like about that place? So oftentimes people will mention someplace in Europe that they like to go. Very, very rarely will they say, oh yeah, the, the Ikea in Katy, Texas was like my favorite place to be. And so then, then I try to say like, well, what you're designing it for is more like this. And that's where I think really showing pictures is, is useful. And then going through what the, the consequences are. This is what you're designing for. This makes it like really difficult to like sustain this, this type of business. Um, and like, you need a certain number of people living in a, a location to be able to provide support for this number of grocery stores or businesses or whatever else. And so I guess what I would try to do is like, ask them like what, what it is that they like about Falls Church or what it is that they like about where they live. And then like try to connect the dots there to like, well, this is how like, how we keep things that way, actually.
And yeah, if you're let's say adding more pavement for more parking, et cetera, it's actively taking away what it could be. Uh, you're mentioning the walkability in the stores and it's spreading things out and all of those things that, yeah, happen when you add more parking and more concrete and just the more, more parking spots in a large strip mall, let's say. Funny thing you mentioned and is a great segue. I have up on my screen, a street craft video and I, I'll send it to you, but it's Disney World reimagined for cars. A unique urban design. And so it's basically adding, widening the roads, making it car centric. And it's basically destroying Disneyland. He did mockups and everything. It was great. It was a horrible atrocity.
It's funny. I, I, I know, I know exactly what you're talking about. I've seen, I've seen that transformation and like, yeah, it's like, where, where do you like to go walk? Like if Disney World is like a wonderful place or Disneyland is a wonderful place to go walk around. It's like, why is that? Well, while it wasn't designed to have parking in every single shop, like imagine like how that would change things and like how that changes our urban design. And so I think Disney World is a really great example of that.
I wonder if he'll do other cities too, because that was a good one. I don't know how well it performed, but I, I know exactly what he was going for. You know, my crazy question, right? I was like, oh, well, why shouldn't we, uh, pave over everything? He just goes all in. He's like, okay, let's do it. Fine. You know what? You win.
Here's what it would look like.
Exactly. I think that's a really good tool because it really is like, fine, screw it. We'll do it. We'll just, we'll pave it all over. And so it really represents everything you just said too, where it's like, hey, like this is what would happen. And then I, I do like your approach of asking those questions and just having them come to that conclusion. Because even if they're far gone, that'll stick with them. Be like, oh yeah, wait, huh. Maybe that doesn't make sense.
A lot of people, a lot of people have an impulse that like, they just wanna be able to park right outside, like wherever they're going. And so then like, what I try to lead them to is like, what are the consequences of that? So like, you know, you can have like your sort of blinders on, which is like, this is how I want things to be. But it's like, actually what, what are the consequences of having things be that way all the time?
I have something. So I think we're coming to a close because we're close to your absolute hard cutoff limit for time. But I wanted to put another tool in your belt or at least provide it because yesterday I was over at West Five here in, uh, London. And they have one of the only electric car charging car carousels. I call it the car vending machine, but they call it the carousel. And I went there to look at it and talk to a VP. Because I think there's, there's problems with it being so far out of London. Like it's, it took me an hour to bike there. It was, it was a while. It's not as small as, uh, for Falls Church. We, we're starting this brawl. That's not great. Um, I'm kind of envious of your district, your city, because it has boundaries. It cannot do just expansion. So I think that can be a very big positive in this case. Anyways, with what they're doing, they experimented with greenfield development, unfortunately, but I don't know if they could have done this within the core of London yet. Now I think they could take parts that they've learned from doing the exercise and developing a very walkable community within that area. It's mixed use zoning. It's all of the good things. It's just unfortunately developed not in like, within the core of the city. So now it's like, you almost have to have a car and then the transit doesn't get out there well enough. And so that part is lacking. But anyways, the reason I bring it up is one, it's fresh as of yesterday. Two, that, it's like a tower and it can fit like 26 cars and there's two of them. And they take up not as much space as a parking lot. And yes, it's, uh, probably over complicated because a car park also could work with stacks. But it's another tool. I don't know. It, it's also fancy and cool, uh, which yes, raises costs, whoopsies. But it's another tool that if people really wanted to have a car vending machine and they wanted to save space, it's, it's cool. Like that's a pretty good, uh, selling point. I don't know the costs on these, but yeah, it's just another tool that has meant a parking lot.
I've, I've seen those. I mean, I've seen similar things like that. I've always wondered like what the cost is of those, you know? I was, I was seeing them out in like the middle of Texas. So I was like, I was like, there's a lot more land here. Like, I don't know why they needed. But so it's not, it seemed more like a, a fun little, like, I don't know, advertising gimmick rather than like something that was useful in that exact spot. But I can imagine like New York City, you know, having, having something like that be like super useful.
Exactly. Yep. Where it's like, hey, very limited space, or if you want to repurpose a parking lot and yeah, I'd have to look into the costs. But I wanted to just shove that out there. There's other parking alternatives too. It doesn't only have to be like surface parking.
Yeah.
Also underground parking exists, but.
That's expensive. It's crazy because it's like, um, you know, parking spot is like, um, 10 plus thousand dollars, but like, once you get to underground, it's like $50,000, maybe even more. It's crazy how much each parking spot costs, um, just for like to build and maintain. So yeah, that's another reason like to not require so much parking on, on all of our housing. Anyway.
Because then there's, yeah, there's then there is the maintain, uh, maintenance. Wow. I can't words right now. There's the maintenance of that. But, um, okay. One of the final questions, if not the, is, is there a parking minimum in Falls Church? Like for, okay. Is it like one per unit or?
The, the parking requirements in Falls Church are like insane. Um, we actually went through, we went through, we did like a baby parking reform and hopefully we're gonna do it, like a bigger parking reform soon. But like for the baby parking reform that we did, like if there was an old building and so this is actually, I'm giving an, a specific example. There's an old building that was a, that is a lawyer's office. They have about like eight spots. If that building wanted to, like if somebody wanted to move in and put in a restaurant, they would need suddenly 17 parking spots. If they wanted to put in a civic space, they would need like 37 civic space being like, I don't know, it's a club. Like if Falls Church Forward wanted to like own that spot, you would have to have 37 parking spots. To become a salon, you would need 49 parking spots. Like where, where, where would you put, where would you put all those like, like, so basically that, that basically says, if this spot ever wants to become a salon, you have to raise the entire thing and, and build something completely different so that you can accommodate all that parking. And so basically it says, you could never have a salon on this site. You could never have a restaurant on this site. Like this is like condemned to only being a lawyer's office. And so like that, that was the baby parking reform that we did, which was like, we opened things up to like more uses, especially for like some of these older buildings that are ready in existence. Right now, usually like parking reform is like, I put that in quotes, but it's done because like a developer will come to us, um, and say like, here's all the things that we're doing for this community. And this is like how much parking we think we need, like. And, and so basically, um, like staff and whatever does the analysis and I, and then we go, we go along with that. So there have been like major parking reductions, but it is not on our, like in our code or in our books right now, which is I, I believe to be like fairly unfortunate. Although I will say for accessory dwelling unit bill, uh, ordinance, uh, we don't require any additional parking. So that was sort of a, a nice, a nice win in that, in that regard.
That's for that one building, correct? Or is that for a series? It's like, that's a lot of time from council to come up to, to the, the decisions and everything else. Whereas if you didn't have it, it's saying, hey, like, we can make less parking spots. We can make it more affordable and hey, like a business can then move in. Oh whoops, it's possible now, rather than like it be a big deal for each and every building.
Right. It basically breathes, that, what, that little baby thing that we did breathes, uh, some new life into some of these older spaces. So that, that's nice. But like, we, we still have a long, I think on our books, we still have like, you need a parking space for every two horses. I know there's, there's something absurd. There's like a whole bunch of like crazy stuff. So yeah, there's, there's, we have a lot we need to do.
Are there any other things that you wanted to bring up? Cause I think we are definitely at your limit and, uh, we're about to wrap up. So.
I think we, it's so funny. Like I, I mean, I feel like I could talk to you for another like 10 hours.
Exactly. That may happen.
I feel like, yeah, right. I, I don't know. I feel like, uh, we, we covered like a good, a good chunk of things. So yeah, I'm feeling pretty good about it.
So where can people find you on the interwebs?
Okay. People can find me on YouTube. That's my number one, um, space. Uh, my channel is just called Justine Underhill. Uh, so definitely check that out. Um, I'm on Blue Sky. I'm on Instagram. I'm on, uh, Twitter. I'm on LinkedIn. Anyway, I, it's funny. I've, I don't know any of my handles though, because I'm so terrible with social media. So you're sure if you just search like Justine Underhill plus those things, you'll find me.
One thing I did with my website, like the benderm.ca is near the bottom, I said, hey, like official social channels. And I just like, And I just like listed them out, cause I'm like, hey, and even the ones that I don't use, I'm like, hey, this is just for verification. Like if you're ever wondering, is this the real me? Then go to that link. And I'm like, oh, I think, I saw that somewhere else. Uh, it was like Tom Scott, he's a YouTuber, the red shirt guy.
Yeah.
And I was like, oh, that's a good idea, cause like he doesn't post on everything. And I think, I don't even know if he posts anymore. Anyways, he took a hiatus or something. And like, oh, that's a good idea, because yeah, a lot of people make fake accounts, so having that one place.
So actually to, to that point, I do have everything listed on justineunderhill.com. So that's, that's an easy, probably the easiest way, yeah.
Okay, there we go, the one redirect for everything. Okay, perfect.